Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the March workshop of Carlisle Borough Council. We'll begin this evening with our pledge of allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Thank you, everyone. First up, citizens to be heard. We have no scheduled guests, but if there are any members of the audience, either here in person or online, we would, uh, we would hear from you now on any matter relating to Borough Government. Stephanie, I don't think anybody has raised their hand. And I don't believe our guest in you. You may do it now. And again, and again, please give your name and address for the record.
Or still, and I think, I'm gonna say like the reason why. I can see that you would want to know someone like the Borough, and if they do, that's a really good reason why I talk here. If somebody works in Borough, you know.
I know. If somebody works in a Borough, that would also give them a good reason to want to talk to the council. But, um, you know, and if it's neither of those, and I think it's reasonable to say, well, what is your interest in talking to the council? But other than that, I just think the fact that I live in the Borough should be enough. And that, and I'm, I feel like I'm echoing. Am I too close? So I, my name's Connie Byers, and I live in the Borough. Thank you. Um, I read some comments about the resolution you're considering voting on next week. Is that still scheduled? And I'll go over them in a moment. And I also have copies that I can give to Mayor Scott, and maybe copies can be made. Because I put my contact information on one of them, but I didn't put it on all of it. I have other copies. I mean, I can. Right. Thank you. First thing I was wondering about the resolution is if it began, did it begin as a template? No, that's, I'm just curious about that. Tim, you need to turn your mic back on. Alrighty, thanks. Good enough.
So yeah, so public comment is your time, and if there's questions, we can have staff follow up.
Right. Comments include a suggestion that the commission be renamed to something like the Carlisle Sharing Experiences, Understanding Harms, and Repairing Relationships Commission. I suggest deleting the first whereas statement. I suggest defining within the resolution and/or deleting the below listed terms, and I'll list them. And instead use descriptive everyday words and provide examples and statistics from Carlisle's past and/or present. And the terms I'm suggesting disregarding is racial injustice, systemic racism, racial disparities, systemic racial injustice, racial equity, racial inequity, truth and reconciliation, and bear witness. A couple of times in the resolution, there's reference to people of color, and color is not capitalized. White is capitalized when white people are referenced. I think color should be capitalized. I suggest deleting the phrase "embroil the lives of people of color" in an ongoing maelstrom of systemic racial injustice. And instead describing exactly what is meant by that in terms of experiences or data or statistics. I suggest deleting "hold public hearings", since the commission is not a law enforcing agency, and replace with "schedule discussion gatherings" or meetings, something similar. I suggest deleting "historically white dominant culture is too often resistant to change", and replace with "established residents have been slow to recognize the harms and improve relations", or similar language. I suggest do not use the word "community", "communities" as this loses sight of and removes the importance of individuals. I suggest deleting collective, collecting evidence, as again, this is not preparation for a legal proceeding. I suggest replacing with "recording accounts", or similar language. And I would appreciate examples of some of the quote institutional and policy reforms meant to mend the wounds and combat, I forget, I don't have the entire quote unquote, that are being considered. What are the, what end are these reforms designed to achieve? What will be required to mend these wounds? And what is envisioned by the council members? I think those are my comments. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Connie. And I do not believe there are, yeah, if you want to leave, you can leave that with Stephanie, and she'll make sure we get to see you. I don't believe there's anyone else that is seeking recognition. So we'll move on to our presentations. And first up, our friends from Chantel to give us a telecommunications update. Representatives from Chantel are here to provide an overview of their project. And so we will turn it over to these folks to introduce yourselves and give us your name and address. And you can use your business address if you like.
Thank, thank you, Mayor. My name is Chris Kyle. I'm a vice president of regulatory here at Chantel. I'm going to share my screen in a minute if I can talk and type. And we've got a short presentation we'll walk through, but I'm also joined here. Andrew, why don't you go ahead and introduce yourself also?
Sure thing. Thanks, Chris. And, and thank you, Mayor Scott and council members. My name is Andrew Dietz, and I'm the director of our Human Resources Business Partner Team. I'm based in our Waynesboro, Virginia location. And then support the entire organization, which of course spreads up in the central Pennsylvania area.
Now, Mayor, if I could just get your feedback, are you seeing this? I'm trying to make it full screen. Can you see my screen fairly well? You can. Okay, great. Because I've lost, I can't see you guys, but I can see my screen and.
Yeah, it's there. It's just, it's just not very big.
All right. Let me, let me see what I can. It's not, uh, here we go. There we go. How about that?
Looks good.
Well, we are excited to be here this evening, and thank you for your time. I, I want this to be interactive. I was planning on talking for maybe 10 minutes on this topic and happy to be interrupted and answer questions as, as we go along, and we could do it at the end. What Chantel is here tonight, we're going to give you an overview on a very exciting proposal or project that we have planned. We're seeking a video franchise or the, the future approval of a video franchise. And we're going to explain why we need that here through this presentation. But in a nutshell, that video franchise is going to allow us to construct an advanced data or broadband network in your community. And so I didn't misspeak. I know I said video franchise, and then I'm jumping over into internet. This project is all about internet. And I'll explain why we need this video franchise, but it'll allow us to get in your public rights of way to pull these fibers throughout, throughout your community. So that, that's what this is all about. And for us to move forward, we're going to need that video franchise. And I'll, I'll talk more about that here in a second. I thought first, uh, it would be helpful if, if you knew a little bit, a little bit about who we are. And I've worked at Chantel for more than 18 years now. And this is a company that is a very old company, and it, it does all forms of telecommunications. We are headquartered in Virginia. We are publicly traded on the NASDAQ. Our strategy has always been pretty simple and, and pretty successful. And, and that involves, we build great networks, and we're going to talk about one of those today, in fact, extending a network. We have fiber today in your community, but we're going to build a great residential fiber network. We'd like to. We provide excellent customer support. And last of all, but not least, we believe in partnering with the local community. With, with a history like ours, we understand the better the community does long term, the better we're going to do. And it's really been an important key to our success. Now, if, if you Google us, or if you look at news, we're navigating somewhat of a big change. One of our business segments involves wireless. We had a six, a large Sprint Wireless segment that covers your area in Virginia, and T-Mobile is going to purchase that from us. What does that mean? We're not going anywhere, and I'll, I'll explain some more of that in a minute. What we're going to have is additional assets to deploy in building broadband. And we didn't want to sell our wireless business, but it was just part of what we, what, what we have to do with, with T-Mobile. Chantel is a company, has over 1,000 employees and over 600 million in annual revenues. This next slide here is where we are. I'm talking to you today in Harrisonburg, Virginia, which is a little purple dot. I don't know if I can, here's my cursor. That little purple dot right there. And that was actually one of our first fiber to the home communities that we started building. It's been almost two years ago. We started here in Virginia closer to our headquarters. Our headquarters is right here in Edinburgh. That's where my office is. And we've started moving north. This, this network is one of the most advanced, if not the, the most advanced, serving the Mid-Atlantic region, and we're very proud of it. These blue lines here are our connective tissue, our fiber, that is so essential and so important of how we will connect all of our markets together. It's our interstate system. All of these purple dots represent markets where we have deployed, what we're going to talk about in a minute, glow fiber, and that's our residential fiber project. But, but we have lots of experience with fiber with some of the largest municipalities, universities across our footprint. And, and what we started to understand is it's the gold standard. And while we were supplying it to lots of very large and sophisticated institution, institutions across our network, there was a great need for that on the residential space, in the residential space. And if nothing, the, the COVID pandemic has put a, a, a very bright spotlight on the need for this type of infrastructure. You know, two people's homes when they're having, you know, to juggle multiple learners from home or, or working from home as I am right now. And, and I'll come back to that point in a second. But the point of these two slides, if you're thinking about who Chantel is, we have the financial resources to execute this project, and this is going to be a multimillion dollar investment in your community. And we have the operational expertise to do this, and we, we, we have a long history of doing this. And so we take that risk off of the table. So let me come back to what it is we're talking about. Um, this is going to be a triple play offering to not just consumers. It'll be to your business community also, but when, when we talk triple play, that's mostly a consumer term, and that's internet, video, and phone. This whole idea is predicated on our technology behind our broadband. But what I think, if anything, we underestimated was the response we received from consumers around the idea of having choice. Choice from who they have to buy their telecommunications services from. In most of our markets that we've talked, that I listed on that map, there, it was for all intents and purposes, a monopolistic market. And, and this, what we are proposing today will give your community significant choice. And what every government entity that's looked at this dynamic is when, when businesses compete, consumers win. But what we're going to do in this approach is we're going to lay fiber optic cable. That's the gold standard, as I was referring to it earlier in our world. And why is that? Well, it, it'll deliver the fastest speeds, and anybody that thinks about broadband speeds are going nowhere, but of demand for data is going up. But not just what you pull down off the internet. And so when I say that, that's like if you were watching a YouTube video or just watching a video one way. With the, with the COVID pandemic is, is we, we need symmetrical broadband. Because a lot of times people are going to be working from home, and they need to push large files up, large, you know, marketing files, large engineering files, doctors working from home evaluating, you know, a, 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 a patient's file. And so that's why, that's why the symmetric aspect is so important. So when we talk gigabit speeds, and you would be a gigabit community, and that has lots of importance for economic development. We are saying it's a gigabit down and a gigabit up. All right. And, and that is really important for what's happening in today's world. So this is, this is going to be capital intensive. This is going to be time intensive. We, we are endeavoring, are embarking upon this because we know fiber is a future-proof solution. When and how you can get fiber, if you can get fiber to a person's home, that means we're going to have future up, upgrade ability to that home, both in speed capacity. And today, it's, it's the most reliable. It, it far outpaces any other technology, whether that's cable modem on the wired side or wireless. And, and last of all, but not least, this economic development impact, what we've seen across the communities where we've already deployed. This is what the businesses that are there want, the hospitals want, the universities want. But employers looking to relocate or, or locate a new facility, they want this type of infrastructure in place. So it, so it certainly has a significant economic development impact. So, so that's, that's what this is, this infrastructure. And so, um, we, we use the words, and I don't use it lightly, this, this is a transformative investment for the future of, of what residents will want and come to expect, you know, in, in top-notch, you know, communities where they, where they live, work, and play. I'm just going to touch briefly on the, the agreement. So there's a video franchise agreement. We will need to finalize and, and have you vote on and approve. And in that, we are saying we will make our service generally available to your community. And if you notice, these two red ovals, we're going to start in these two areas. And, and then, you know, I think with our existing network, the good news for Carlisle is normally when I talk about our bill plan, we approve a video franchise, and that's a year before we can turn up the first home. In your community, knock on wood, I think if we can get started and get this finalized, we could turn up our first homes in about six months. And those first homes would be in these red ovals in and around those red ovals. We're not just going to stop. Pace matters to us. This is going to become a very competitive marketplace. We've seen this in every other market. Comcast, the incumbent is going to respond with new price offerings. And so we are working out, we'll finalize a, you know, a project plan with leaders, municipal leadership, so we can kind of proceed along this bill plan and, and complete it, you know, it, it with good pace, but you know, in the least disruptive manner possible. So that, that's kind of the build-out area. We have been engaging with municipal leadership. As, as I spoke, we've taken a lot of feedback there. And that will be ongoing. The first, the next step is this video franchise approval. But then there will be a project plan. There will be additional information developed through the project plan. We've already engaged with the utility provider. Most of our infrastructure will go on the existing power poles that are there. We follow power. Again, because it's the least disruptive way, but where power goes underground will go underground. We have had people in the area doing some outside surveys to help accelerate. We're, we're real excited, you know, about this. And, and with, with the approval of this video franchise, that would move us into the next step where, where we would be ready to submit some initial permits. And that's where we cannot do anything until Carlisle approves our permits. But once they approve permits, we can begin construction on this. And so there's kind of multiple stages and gates you have of control and oversight over us. But this first agreement, what we'd like to say is it, it's, it's our permission to, to ask permission, begin our construction. What, what, in addition to the technology, this will bring local jobs in marketing, sales, and operations. We've already started feeding some of those job descriptions. They will be locally based, and you know, there will be a big focus, and there always is. Because again, it's another area differentiation for us, and it gives us a competitive advantage with that. Sales, let me talk for a minute about sales and marketing. We've been talking about access. In our world, you know, access to broadband is a big deal. We won't wait to build out the whole network before we turn up the first customer. We're going to, we build out neighborhood by neighborhood, and we'll turn a neighborhood up. And we don't just mail people and say, you know, I, I hope you know about us. We'll have trucks in your area that will be branded glow. There'll be some buzz around that. Generally, it's a lot of buzz. People get very excited. And we'll have people in the neighborhoods when we're ready to turn them up, you know, taking orders, that kind of thing for, for our service. So that's access. But equally important in our world is affordability, and there's lots changing in our world. The COVID pandemic was one of the leading in change agents for this. And so we are currently enrolling in something called the Emergency Broadband Benefit Program. And we expect this to be the first of many programs rolled out by the federal government that will offer discounts and subsidies to residential consumer service. And this one specifically should roll out in late April to early May. And it will apply to students. It will apply to anybody's job who has been impacted by COVID, and it will apply to low-income consumers. And so that's the affordability, and lots more to come on that, but that's, that's very important. And as we work through building out more of the market, you know, we will move into additional community engagement topics and things, things like that. Now, I've been talking a lot, and if there are any questions, and I can't see anybody right now, so just interrupt me. I'm going to move to the next slide, but I just wanted to pause for a second if there are any questions.
We do have a question from someone watching on Zoom.
Yes.
So Isabel, you should be able to unmute yourself and speak.
Thank you very much. I just have a couple of questions for you. At the beginning of your presentation, you discussed starting, you know, to affect, to be able to affect rural areas. However, your starting point is within the urban structure. How long do you think that it will take for you to roll out to ensure that rural areas are covered in here? And then the second question I have has to do, I'm not sure I understood this correctly. Are you saying that this is going to become an opportunity to buy into a franchise? And then I'll stop there. I do have another question, but I'll stop there. Thank you.
Sure. Good, good questions. Um, so the, the second one I'll take first because that's the easiest one. No, we're not selling subscriptions into a franchise. This, this, we're an operator, and, and you would just pay month to month. We don't, you know, we don't even require contracts, really. We think the proof should be in the pudding, and you know, we're, we're going to win people with great service and, and a great customer experience. So no, Chantel is very profitable, long history, and, and we're coming here to deliver service. We're investing our money upfront, and, and we'll just be selling a monthly recurring fee. You know, you could think of, you know, it depends if we're talking about taking advantage of any grant subsidies through the federal government. But without that, setting those off to the side, you know, $60 to $80 for gig speeds of internet, and then we have a television package, and we have phone packages, you know. This pricing question comes up a lot. I'll just hit it. We have to be price competitive with the incumbent. We know that's important. We're going to deliver a better technology, a better speeds, and a better experience while being price competitive, because that's just important. So no franchise for us. But we want your business rule. We, that, that, so that's near and dear to our heart. That's where we started. We are located in a town that has no stoplight. That's Edinburgh, Virginia. You know, that town probably, while it has no stoplight, probably has $40 million of some of the most advanced telecommunications facilities anywhere. And it's a, it's an amazing story of, you know, the revitalization of rural, rural communities. So that, that, those are our roots. Now let's talk about this strategy. When we do a glow market, a fiber to the home market, we go into the, the densest areas, the city, the core of the city, because density matters, and we build that fiber first, okay? And then we start expanding out into the communities, outside even of, you know, the, the dense areas. And at some point, there'll be a drop-off as we move in, into the less dense areas. And we have a, we have a fixed wireless product for that, but, but that is not part of this presentation. So, um, I, I, I can follow it with you later, but we, we have a lot to chew on here, but this is how it starts. And then, you know, we, once we get the fiber in place, you have this expansion outside of the core.
I had a question.
Yeah, one question, Mr. Mayor. You don't mind. Thank you, Mr. Cough, for that overview. I, I am curious to know if council or, or staff or, or any of our economic development groups would have any say as to the expansion in which communities, after you built the core, that this potentially would go to. We certainly have segments in our community that probably would benefit from this more than others. And particularly if that is provided in a economic way. But be curious to know how much we, we would kind of be able to direct where those services, where they were most in need, would go.
Was that a question for me or for your economic development group?
Well, I'm, I'm guessing this will come back to you either way.
So, so we, we have, part of these ovals came, the red ovals from feedback. We'll continue to solicit feedback. I mean, the good news is the vast majority inside of the boundaries of that map I showed you are going to be built. I think the conversation right now is talking about, once we extend outside of those boundaries, what does it look like?
That, that, that's, yeah, that's right.
And so there will be ongoing. And so there will be ongoing um feedback with those stakeholders that you're talking about to direct us. Uh, we we've just got to, we got to get into this first. Um, but but we wouldn't, we wouldn't be good business people if if we weren't.
Yeah, I I think te- technically I understand the the core and the density uh logic there. But um, yeah, as as we're thinking about building these these out and and synchronizing it, um, I think we would probably have some uh priorities uh if if we were to move forward, but thanks for answering that.
Yeah, and to be clear, I think, oh, um, you know, th- those priorities, I think, are gonna sit outside of the municipal bound- boundaries.
Uh, that, that's not, that's not true in our case. I mean, we we, obviously, we care about our neighbors greatly, but we have needs uh in this community too. So um, it would, but it's, I'm talking outside of or those core rings that you have.
Okay, yeah, right, right. So thank you for, all right. Now, there there is, we we've had a series of meeting with uh leadership, the municipal leadership and um there there is a very high level of overlay uh for what you're talking about. So that that concern, and I could follow up with you separately, and that has been at the top of the list. Um, for Owen, I know specifically, uh, we we have a good matchup and there's been several conversations and dialogues. And it has, let me just say, what I'm talking about has nothing to do with those ovals. It has to do with your entire municipal um coverage, for the entire municipal footprint.
Thank you.
So, Crapsey.
Uh, tha- thank you, Mr. Mayor, and uh thank you, Mr. Kyle, um, for this presentation. I just had uh two, um, I think, quick questions. The first on on the local job side, um, can you, can you touch a little bit on Chantel's um potentially equitable hiring practices and diversity within the workforce? Um, and then the second piece, outside of the the benefit of 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 the service that you provide and the local jobs, um, can you touch on any um local impacts that Chantel has um within their communities? Whether it be, you know, adopt the park programs or helping um local nonprofits uh through fundraising drives and and things like that?
Great, great question. Uh, thank you uh for that. And and this has also been with Mr. Snyder and and um others, a topic of of conversation. Your second question is easiest and then I'll get into this one. Um, yes, uh, we do support, we um, the the way this will work, local nonprofits um giving back. I mean, you don't do what we do over the long period of time and 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 not have that as as part of your DNA. Um, and and so, you know, there there will be a stage of this where we would uh come back, sit down with you and and talk about um things because they're different, right? They're different for each uh com- community. Uh, but whether it's the Boys and Girls Club, um, whether it's United Way, you know, we do all of those things and we have a large footprint and and we we do those things and those are very, very important. Let me try to um give a a a short summary on this, on this topic, your other point about the hiring. So as I discussed earlier, we've already provided some of our job descriptions. Um, and there are varying levels of uh qualifications. We'll we'll have some door to door, we'll have salespeople that need to knock on doors. We'll have installation technicians that, you know, need to connect a fiber to each one of these homes. Um, you know, on the outside, we'll have people that need to go in the home and hook up routers so people can actually get their television or their internet. It's it's all wireless, you know, inside. Um, and and so I I think that was a very good um proactive question that we received early on to talk about planning. And we work with, you know, um, community colleges in our footprint to talk through these things and other workforce development boards, and I understand you have one there. Um, so when the need arises and it's not a one time, this is as we grow customers, there are going to be more jobs. Um, we 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 will be uh fielding and not just employees that are qualified, that's the qualification piece. But um, let's talk about diversity. So um, we we are an equal um opportunity employer. Uh, you know, this this first part, this is core to to our culture of who we are um at Chantel. But we also recognize that, you know, this isn't static and and it was made very uh aware to us that, you know, this, you know, in Carlisle, this can't just be words on a page and it's not. And so I'm glad this this uh, this this conversation has come up. Let me first say, what are we trying to accomplish? Well, you know, we're we're gonna be a better competitor with better ideas if 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 we solve and continue to improve, you know, the inclusiveness and and diverse culture that we have with employees and talent, period. And and so what are we doing to do that? Well, right, there this diversity goals, these are our goals uh taken right from, and that's why I have Andrew here also, um, but, you know, we are continuing to expand, this is what we do today. But, you know, we are continuing to expand this to recruit and hire and retrain and 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 retain um experienced and diverse talent. And then we have a variety of strategic initiatives uh to do these things. But but we are an EEO qualified uh employer. We have these, we have policies, we work with the federal government. Um, but these policies are not static. Um, what I want to say, and I think twenty twenty, we've talked a lot about COVID, but twenty twenty has been eye opening, you know, I think, for all uh companies uh and eye opening on on this topic. And this kind of third bullet here, you know, uh, we we have a diversity, equity and inclusion initiative. This, you know, didn't just start, um, but there is a lot of focus around this. It is executive led. Uh, you know, we we are doing a lot of employee feedback with um pulse surveys, you know, again, taking this and refining it. Um, you know, with training, with tracking. Um, we want to do this because it's the right thing and it's gonna deliver a better better product, a better service for our community. But it's the right thing for the communities that we serve. Um, now, setting, so that's why we're doing it. But in addition, we are regulated, um, and this started, you know, well before, you know, twenty twenty, but whether it's with the FCC or a variety of other entities, we we provide and have to follow, we're we're a federal government contractor, a variety of reporting and diversity um initiatives. And so that's, that's kind of the background uh of of where we are and what we're doing. And um, you know, I I think that, you know, it we we view this as important and critical, it's not static for us and um we're continuing to change and improve this.
Great, thank you.
I think this is one area where our size helps us. Um, you know, in in as we continue to evolve, I mean, one of the things I love talking about the most is is the jobs that we can bring to a community. And these are the jobs of the future, people that can work on broadband, whether it's in the home or, you know, fiber optics across the public rights away.
Any, any, any further questions from Mr. Kyle?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Mr. Kyle, you've been talking about jobs. I understand there's no way to actually put a a number on it, but could you tell us the ballpark we're in? Um, when you're talking about hiring locally, is this, will this only be during setup? Will there be an ongoing employment uh presence in the community? Or would it be, you know, is it two people, twenty people?
Right, right.
Just, and I obviously, I can't, I I'm just trying to get a sense of what we're looking at in terms.
It's a good question, right? It, yeah, it's a, that that is a perfectly uh good question. And so certainly more than two, um, and and so there'll be waves of of this. And so with construction coming in, um, and we're gonna, you you, part of this is gonna be a Pennsylvania region that we're still continuing to develop, to develop. Um, but the short answer is, you know, you could easily see something that approaches your twenty mark and it would be split between, you know, a handful of door to door people uh going around. And the these are not, you know, just in the initial phases either. Uh, if if you think about this, that whether there will be peaks and 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 valleys when we kind of saturate a neighborhood, um, and then a shell selling season. Um, we we are a twenty four seven business. We have, we have customers, you know, that, again, broad broadband is more important than electric electric service today. And so that, when you get the technicians and operations, those are gonna be people permanently that live in your community. Um, yeah, it's hard for me right now to put a number on them, but, you know, you know, five to seven, just in that category easily.
Okay.
This isn't, this isn't, um, I think that's a great question. This isn't a manufacturing facility bringing a hundred jobs.
Yeah.
But, yeah, that I hope that helps, you know, clarify. But these are good.
We have a question from the audience.
Um, Ms. Harmon, you can unmute yourself.
Thank you very much. Again, I apologize, but I have a more question that kind of piggybacks on um the the previous question. Um, you you talk about the jobs of the future, um, what you're bringing to the community. Uh, there's something in your um bullet two under diversity goals that kind of causes me to pause. And it talks about recruit, hire and retain experienced and diverse talent. Um, there are many people in our community who are um may not be up to speed with some of the uh of what you need in terms of employee um talent and experience. So what are you doing to ensure that uh people who are being hired from from our community are going to be um given the opportunity to train and continue development?
I think it's, I didn't mean to, that these are not, uh, it's not meant to be exclusionary. Um, I mean, maybe I'll take this, what I do personally, I, you know, I I live in an area in Virginia. I work on a variety of economic development groups that do workforce training and development. And um, you know, what, you know, Chantel has done, we've sponsored community college. Uh, uh, technical vocational certification classes, for for instance, like how to do this fiber splicing, how to climb poles and 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 and, you know, and we've gone together with other providers. It's not saying they have to take a job from us either, but it it is something to create. And that was the beginnings of these job descriptions uh that we've that we've created um or that we passed over. And so there's, there's certainly more to come, but no, it 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 is, there'll be a variety of different jobs, some of which we will need, you know, some background, but some don't, some, it's on the job train. Uh, and then even within the technicians, um, you know, we we do, what we need is people that wanna serve people, people that wanna please customers. And we can teach them the rest. So maybe I should have started there. We're trying to find the right, and so, um, let me also say, we're in business, we we need an employee base that is reflective of the community that we serve for them to under, you know, best served, to best understand their customers. And so that's how we come at it. Again, coming back to our size, we have the resources to do this training and we will um look at, in your area, we've done it in these other areas, what what is needed to do that. But we have jobs where you 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 don't have to come in with training. But what we do need is local people with the right perspective and the right attitude.
Any other questions or comments?
Well, I'll just make a a quick comment because I was in the, one of the initial groups to to meet with Chris and and his group. And I'm I'm really, I'm excited about the opportunity to have some some competition here in the borough. I'm I'm excited about the 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 symmetry of this service, um, which, uh, you know, I think is is incredibly important going going forward. Um, I'll also note that that um, the the that diversity, equity and and inclusivity was pretty clear from from the start. We saw the initial map with those red ovals, we were good to back, back to those that um, we 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 tweaked because we know the ground a little bit better here, but they were already thinking in that direction and it was just an incremental improvement um, once we we provided some input. So I appreciate that that, Chris, to to you and the the rest of your team. Um, for someone like Isabel, I think Isabel lives outside of the borough. Um, and, you know, though we're here serving the the residents of Carlisle. Um, just a quick question, Chris. When you, when you move into sort of sort of a more urbanized hub like Carlisle is, does that allow you to then sort of springboard into those neighboring townships eventually?
That's right. That that's the plan and that's what I was stumbling my way through the first time. And so, thank you. So, you know, we we plant a flag and then we spider web it out. In our, in our world, there's large fixed costs upfront. We're we're coming in first here uh to plant these fixed costs and the, but the way we really are successful long term is is spreading those fixed costs over as many customers. And so that's why we will continue to spread out um side of the borough boundaries.
Okay, great. Thanks, Chris. Appreciate it.
All right. Chris, you have another commenter? Okay, just for the benefit of council and our audience tonight, just go over a little bit of the schedule as to where we go from here. Uh, tonight was the workshop meeting and Chantel gave their uh presentation to council of the public. Then on March eleventh, uh, council could consider approval of drafting and advertising an ordinance authorizing the execution of a cable franchise agreement. And that would be just to draft and advertise. And then in April, at our April meeting, we would consider approval of the ordinance after advertising for thirty days and um holding it open for public comment. So that is the tentative schedule, always subject to change, of course, but uh that should give you some certainty, uh, Mr. Kyle.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you very much. We're all excited about this and I'm sure we'll be seeing you soon. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, next up, um, this is the remembering sobrenica. Uh, Councilor Landis brought this topic forward, so I will turn this over to her for remarks and comment.
Thank you, Mayor Scott. Uh, so um, my friend Bedruden, um, who I worked with for a number of years, um, brought to me uh the idea of um a couple of things. Um, one, a a walk um related to a a, you know, something um of importance within our Bosnian community. Um, and I've worked with him for a number of years and he, uh, through that time, I was able to learn a lot about um our community here and about some of the impacts of um uh the unfortunate and horrific experiences that that a lot of the folks either encountered or their family members um did. Uh, and so instead of just working through staff and sending this along through those channels, which we could have approved in that way, I did think that it was very relevant and helpful for um for him to be able to present uh this particular um request and and I've followed um their story also uh as they've had a couple dinners at the YWCA. I know Mayor Scott was at one of those, maybe some other counselors were as well. Um, so the folks that haven't been there, I think sometimes we lose track uh of of what the history is. And so I thought it would be very helpful if they gave a little presentation um to educate council as well as the public. And um, and then hopefully that can get some additional interest in um some events and some other ideas that they have coming forward. So um, I'm gonna uh hand it over to Bedruden so he can also uh um introduce. Uh, I believe there's a couple other folks on the call that may be speaking. So, all right, thank you, Bedruden, for bringing this forward.
Absolutely. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Uh, hello, everyone. I am Bedruden Basiravich. Uh, I wanted to start off by uh thanking everybody for being here today. Uh, I have with me Zanay Gudanich and Amar Samenoch, who are both uh members of the Carlisle community. Uh, we are essentially here to share some information about a potential future project uh event that we would like to take place um later this year. Um, this event is um, as uh Mayor Tim Scott said, uh, Remembering Sedabensa. Uh, it would be a walk that would take place uh in downtown Carlisle. Uh, so we prepared a sh- very short um PowerPoint presentation and it's just mainly pictures with some text and I'll do the uh the talking. Um, so we're just gonna start off by introducing ourselves, just sharing a little bit about ourselves. Um, and I'll start, I was born in nineteen ninety six in Tuzla, Bosnia, which was after the uh aggression took place. Uh, my mother is from Ravashteska and my father from Bichido Chvlasensha. Uh, we came to the United States in May of two thousand one and were settled in Harrisburg. Uh, two months later, we were settled. Uh, two months later, we were settled uh, in Carlisle, Pennsylvania. Uh, my parents have been there ever since. Uh, and I'm actually now in Nebraska, but I plan to be back in Carlisle uh, later this year. Um, I just want to share my fondest memory of uh, my beginning in the United States. Uh, it was actually when Amar's. Uh, father brought me a watermelon, um, when we were uh, in Harrisburg. Um, since then, I've gone through school in Carlisle. I completed my undergrad at Dickinson College. And I'm now finishing school at Creighton Law, uh, and I'm planning on coming back to Pennsylvania to practice. Uh, I will now let Zenaid and Amar uh, tell us a little bit about themselves.
Hello, everyone. It's a pleasure to be here with you. Uh, my name is Zenaid Granic. Uh, I was born in Tuzla, like Bedruden. Ninety ninety-four in the middle of war uh, in my country. Uh, I finished my elementary high school and graduate. College in Sarajevo, the capital city of Bosnia. Uh, first time I was in the United States in two thousand fifteen, I was like in St. Louis. And two thousand seventeen in Atlanta, Georgia. Now I'm here like three years, um, like religious leader in in my community of Bosnian community here. For us, uh, this is very, very important project. So everyone knows what happened in in Serbia in July nineteen ninety-five and. It's a pleasure, when I said I'm beginning to be here. Thank you. Thank you for this opportunity.
Amar.
Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Alrighty. Um, my name is Amar Sturvenovic. Uh, my family and I are from the same region as the Judens. Um, we arrived in the United States in two thousand and we settled in DC, but. Uh, shortly after we had moved to Carlisle around late two thousand one.
Amar, that's it. That was very short.
Yeah.
Um, so, uh, the reason I have these two with me today, uh, not that, uh, Amar and I are family. Uh, Zenaid and I met um, some three years ago. Um, they are prime examples of how um, three different individuals have three different paths and uh, end up in uh, somewhere we call. Uh, home Carlisle. Um, so the focus of this presentation is essentially why we should have uh, the event. Um, the remembering uh, Sedan so walk. Um, and I will take you through uh, the PowerPoint presentation, which is mainly pictures. Um, so the green colored country is Bosnia and Hesgona. That's where we are from. Um. Um. In Bosnia, um, on the eastern part, we have uh, Serbiansa and that is um, uh, the focus. Uh, in July nineteen ninety-five, uh, Bosnian Serb forces systematically murdered um, over eight thousand Bosnian men and boys. Uh, it's the worst crime of the Bosnian war uh, that took place from ninety-two to ninety-five. Uh, and remains the only massacre on European soil uh, since the Second World War. Um, that was ruled a genocide. So this is what uh, Sedans are really boils down to. Um, this is the memorial in Potatara. Which is, it's not that far from uh, where the killings actually took place. Um, it's now known as the place of white headstones. And uh, my grandfather actually has one of these headstones as he was one of the uh, eight thousand that was uh, brutally murdered. Uh, in nineteen ninety-five. Uh, the next two slide, the next two slides show um. The way we commemorate uh, Sedansa. Uh, we tried to stay creative. Um, in our community. Um, this was during a pandemic last year. Uh, I mean, we are still in a pandemic. Um, but this is a small number of our Carlisle uh, Bosnian members. Um, here you have pictured uh, Zenaid in the center. There are the three different uh, individuals. Um, the white. Is eleven petals uh, of the Sedance of flower, which I will also show you um, on the next slide. Uh, the eleven petals symbolize uh, July eleventh, when all of this uh, began. Uh, so these are um. This is a small group of our um, our kids in the Bosnian community. Uh, what they're doing here is just um, recreating that. Set evidence of flower, which has the eleven petals to symbolize July eleventh. Um, we use these events uh, to educate our kids about what took place in nineteen ninety-five. Um, and not just in nineteen ninety-five, um, throughout that whole uh, time period in the early nineties. In which um, Zenaid has lost uh, multiple members. I've lost multiple members of our uh, of our family. Amar's parents have lost multiple members. Um, and we were fortunate enough to have uh, not only the United States. Uh, take us in, but also uh, an accepting Carlisle community. So this uh, this is also a picture of an event that took place in October of two thousand nineteen. This is a film showing um, at Dickinson. Uh, this was led by Dermot Groom. Uh, who was the lead prosecutor at the Hague. And I think this is a clear depiction of why we should uh, hold the remembering Sedance a walk. And include the greater Carlisle community uh, in these types of events, uh, simply because. This shows um, how supportive the greater Carlisle community really is of uh, of essentially us being here. Um, and how willing they are uh, to learn about what took place, uh, not only in nineteen ninety-five, but simply throughout that whole period. Um, I'm gonna end by saying that the remembering Sedance a walk uh, will have an even greater uh, impact on the greater Carlisle community. Um, this is about maybe, maybe four hundred uh, individuals that are included here. Uh, but also uh, outside of this auditorium. Uh, I think we can attract a rather larger number. Of individuals uh, for the remembering Sedan so walk, uh, because essentially we must learn uh, from our past. To be able to address the present in order to have a better future and our future is in Carlisle. Um. That's it for the presentation. Uh, I will open it up for, for any questions anybody has.
Any questions about this event? I remember going to this and the only regret I have is that I could not stay for the food. Because I understand the food was delicious, but uh, the event was very impactful, very powerful, and I agree. This was a huge cross-section of our community and uh, you know, I I I think that everyone would would benefit from this and learning more. Uh, Brenna, do you have anything you'd like to say?
Um, I think that this is a a wonderful opportunity to um, obviously uh, gather folks and um, you know, have them participate. Or even just, you know, learn by seeing and understanding that something is happening. And even if they aren't aware of it, then they ask questions. And I think that it's all about asking questions, learning who's in your community. Maybe you don't cross paths with everyone all the time. Or maybe you do and you don't even understand their history. And um, uh, so I know that this year is also still, you know, we're still in COVID. So I think that we can work with staff to figure out, you know, if we would um, you know, go forward with this, how we can, you know, keep uh, everyone safe. Um, but I do think that it would be beneficial um, to have that, uh, they have also spoken of maybe having a plaque or trees. Planted in one of our parks. So there would be um, you know, something that's also ongoing, um, where people can reflect and and also have some information about what. Uh, you know, what happened in July nineteen ninety-five. Um, and I really do uh, want to say that I appreciate um. Everyone that that that, you know, that has brought their story here, that they, you know, they told their story of their family and I'm sure that it's, you know, it's still tough. Um, and I I think that, but I think it's really nice that they're opening up to us um, on a very personal level. Um, because this is a very personal experience and and history. And so I, I uh, I'm, I'm grateful for them bringing it forward. And I'm happy to help um, in any way to make um, this work out.
And I I I've met with leaders, with leaders of the community, the Bosnian community and the Islamic Center and uh, the the people of good faith and. Uh, happy to support this as well. Um, I would just suggest that you work with the staff to get the proper approvals. And then uh, they will bring it to us um, once it's ready to go.
Mister Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
If I might just ask, um, in addition to the parade, if there could also be some essentially educational opportunities? Because I think there's a lot of people who, Americans have a bad habit of not paying attention to things outside our borders. And so I would think that there's an awful lot of people who live in Carlisle who are almost completely unaware of the Bosnian conflict. And what, and the, the terrible things that happened during that time. So for people to have a better understanding about what brought all these wonderful folks to our community. I think would ha- would be really helpful.
Your point is well taken. Thank you. Any further comments?
Um, we're looking forward to closely working uh, with the Borough Council. Um, I will take that. Uh, essentially to the board of the center. Um, we are working on um. We're, we're working on uh, putting together maybe a panel of individuals that might talk. I know um. Uh, Mister Schultz has uh, also expressed the interest that speaking uh, uh, to speak at the event. Um, so we're definitely um, trying to compile a list of individuals, whether they be uh, academics. Or uh, maybe a presentation by the children as well. Uh, I know there are different restrictions that we have to abide by simply because of the pandemic. Um, but if we can get um, uh, a small presentation, uh, whether that's done by the uh, by our children. Of the Bosnian community in Carlisle or uh, by a couple academics, um, that would be. I think that would be uh, wonderful for this event.
Well, again, thank you for your time and thank you for bringing all this to us and uh, we look forward to working with you and look forward to the event.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright. Alright, next up, our friends from the uh, the Carlisle Youth Cycling. Or an update on the wonderful pump track that we have. I believe there's a video, so that's also exciting.
Okay. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Scott, and thank you, council members and the borough's management team and administrative team. Uh, for giving us a few minutes this evening to give you an exciting update on uh, the status of our pump track project. Um, I believe, I'm sorry, my screen just like, all the stuff just changed all at once. Um, uh, joining us uh, this evening is also Mark Heeb, the Cumberland Youth Cycling Development President. John Rose, who's our treasurer and head coach, uh, Charlie Scanzello, and I'm not sure Greg Holtzman is on. Nope, I see Charlie. Um, here on behalf of BL Companies, who is our landscape architect uh, for the project. And my son is uh, here with me as well, who's been instrumental in helping us um, move this project forward. And and working on the design and fundraising and all aspects of it. Um. So I just, again, we wanted to uh, provide an an update. We've had a major milestone, significant progress. In uh, completing the preliminary design, which Charlie will go over uh, with you uh, momentarily. Um, but we want the uh, to get us to this point, we BL Companies um. Did a boundary survey of the property, uh, did a high resolution digital elevation model uh, of the property. Um, they did a presence absence test for wetland soils. They uh, took GPS coordinates of all of the. Uh, mature trees, twelve inches and greater uh, on the site. And uh, and then prepared a a detailed site layout and um. Um, had the design of the pump track itself. Um, so with that, I I wanted to. Uh, turn it over to Charlie. He's going to hopefully be able to share his screen. They go through the the site layout and the detail of the the detailed layout for the pump track. And then we wanted to show you a um, really fun and exciting uh, video uh, that we, that Charlie was uh, created. To to, it's kind of a fly through uh, virtual uh, simulation of the track itself. So. Take it away, Charlie.
All right. Thank you very much. So I just want to walk us through uh, what we've prepared so far, just kind of walking through the site. Uh, we have a couple of different site plans and then closer up, and then a couple thumbnail photos, and then we'll get into the video. So to start us off, um, the main entrance to the site is going to be off of Meadow Boulevard, as it is now to Valley Meadows Park. Uh, one of the key parts here, uh, item number one is we need a waterline connection into the. Uh, Borough Water Service. And this will be to um, support a a couple hose bibs more for maintenance of the uh, pump track. As well as uh, we'd like to provide a fountain in the gathering area, uh, proposed, and that will be for uh, clean drinking water for any and all. Um, gathering as well as using the pump track. Uh, as we continue into the site, uh, at two, we would like to propose. Uh, ADA parking as part of this. Currently, it's just a grass lot, but as part of this, just a small portion of that existing lot should be paved. Uh, and be brought up to ADA guidelines, uh, in order to provide a couple spaces for for those individuals needing that. As we continue in um, to number three, there needs to be a space for a maintenance shed and stockpile. And just an area to keep different tools and and whatnot for the maintenance of the pump track. Uh, I believe one comment we had gotten earlier um, from the borough was the potential to move this to. Uh, another location on site so it's out of sight, and that is certainly amenable. Um, this can be most anywhere. Um, and and the exact location can be nailed down at a later date as this gets developed further. Um, but with that, um, having the shed, all the tools and everything would be uh, housed internally. And and kept clean, uh, and and it would be maintained such that it would not be an eyesore. So getting to number four, we have a gathering area proposed. Uh, and this was, would be where we have some picnic tables, a drinking fountain, um, and areas for uh. Family members and friends to um, sit and wait and view any of those who are using the pump track or even a a a place for. A reprieve uh, to take a little break after you're done cycling. Number five is an area that is, since we're currently in preliminary design uh, of this, we have the main pump track. And, but we want to have an area for potential future uh, elements to go along with the pump track, including. Possible multiple progressive drop ramps, tabletop jump, kicker jumps, skinnies and teeter totters. Um, I've been learning a lot of different uh, terminology as I've been working with uh, CYCD. Uh, on this project and it's been great. I love a lot of these terms. So on the six, we have our main pump track. We have a lot of different elements, well, which I will get to in a zoomed in view. And then finally, we, through this design, we're addressing that we'll have a need for some stormwater management. And with that, we want to provide a um, a relatively small rain garden that should be able to manage everything that we're proposing. Uh, most of the stormwater um, is going to be going across the site and we're going to be maintaining that through this design. Um, any of these uh, hills and berms that are being designed will also have uh, flow-through pipes for stormwater to continue along its way. We'll capture that in a proposed rain garden, which will be lovely, um, beautifully planted and um, be able to address all of our stormwater. So getting a little, in a little bit closer. I'll zoom in here. Our main pump track design, we're starting with A here, which is a beginner's track. So as part of this, it's a very flexible design. Uh, to provide uh, experiences for all experience, uh, experience levels of cyclists. Um, so those who are just starting out have an area to uh, learn the ropes of the pump track and different fundamentals for cycling. At point B, we have our main start, which is a drop-in with multiple uh, areas to start your journey through the pump track. Uh, going on with this flexibility of you really have a lot of different options, uh, and and it's not a very static course. You can make it what you want. You can uh, be iterative and take different options as you go through, wherever you start and how you end up. See, these uh, curves you see here are typical berms, usually built up and for similar to an embankment for turning. Uh, and and giving a little bit of a speed boost around these corners. D, we have different um, rollers. Which are um, hills essentially that you go up and down. Uh, E, we have progressively larger rollers, same with F. Uh, as we did in, and I can get into some some uh, thumbnails that will better show these. G is a unique uh, element where these two berms kind of snake back on each other as you go through. And finally, H is the. And finally, H is this junction where, again, with the flexibility, is we have all of these different areas coming together, not at the start, but halfway through the pump track. So there's a lot of flexibility and dynamic elements to really make this a unique experience. Finally, I is a, excuse me, a step up, step down, which is a really large kind of hill up and then coming back down right before you ramp back up into the start point and can continue on your way. So here we have some thumbnails just to showcase what I was talking about there, in case you don't have a perfect image in your head. So first, we have the beginner track. I have a couple, like a small, a smaller starting area and a very small loop with firms and rollers to get the fundamentals. Here we have our main starter hill, as you can see, multiple areas to jump off of. Our berms use built-up areas that you can bank a corner. Our rollers and progressively larger rollers as we get up for higher and more velocity going up and down. This berm to berm, as you bank one corner, have to quickly bank another for a very exciting junction. And finally, this berm transfer where people or cyclists can either bank their corner from this direction or that direction, depending on how they enter, or the possibility to jump over and enter into another track and change up that experience. And then finally, our step up, step down. So with that, I believe we can jump into the video. Let me change my screen here. Is the video showing now? Can anyone give me a confirmation on that?
Yes.
Excellent. So this is an overview video. I apologize if it's a little bit choppy while we're streaming, but we have provided the borough with the video that they're able to upload. So hopefully, we can get that uploaded to the website, and people will be able to do that with much higher resolution and definition. And as we go through the site, we really want to emphasize how this integrates into the existing park. We are, for the most part, avoiding all trees that are through here. There will need to be some clearing and grubbing as we prepare the site and removal of any damaged or dead trees. But we want to maintain all of the existing trees to the best of our ability and really create a unique. A unique pump track in which it's situated within the woods that are there now. So as we go through here, we can kind of get that sense of what a cyclist is going through as they're banking these banking these berms, going up and down these rollers. You see this fork here? Where the track con joins with each other, doubled back. But as we were designing this, and really in 3D modeling this, I'm looking at other pump track designs. One of the things that I started noticing was at least no other pump tracks that I found as precedent were situated directly in the woods. So I found that to be a really unique opportunity. Really made this feel like a like you're actually going through a mountain biking course in the woods rather than a cut-out track. So as we continue here, we have some more rollers approaching a berm. We continue on our way. And with this, with these different pumps, there's the opportunity for different experience levels to jump, make these jumps. You could jump across these, or you can just simply pump through them. So whether you are a beginner and starting on the beginner track, you have those opportunities. Or if you're more intermediate, you can start getting into the main track and just pumping through and taking jumps at your leisure. Or if you're at your highest experience level, you can be taking this with hard turns and high jumps and really make it your own. So with that, I'll turn it back over to John with any closing words or any questions we may have.
Great. Thank you, Charlie. Yeah, just a couple of, I just wanted to go over the next steps. So we're still in the process, our fundraising process, but this gives us the professional product that we need for our grant applications. Along with the preliminary design and site plan that Charlie reviewed with you, they've also created a preliminary estimate of probable cost for the project. So that is very detailed, has all of the different components, cost aspects for the project that we also will need in connection with our grant application. So as you know, the Cumberland Area Economic Development Corporation provided us $65,000, $65,000 grant, a portion of which was used in connection with this preliminary design. COVID kind of set us back with some of our fundraising activities last year. But we will be, we just submitted a grant application to the Partnership for Better Health. We anticipate submitting a grant application to the Cumberland County Land Partnership Grant Program. That application's due in June with a decision in September. And similarly, we're going to be pursuing a grant with the DCED, the Commonwealth Financing Authority, through their Greenways Trails and Recreation Program, the GTRP grant. There are other, certainly other potential sources of funding, including on the private sector, where we've we've had some preliminary conversations with some individuals and companies that have been very supportive of the project. But we were basically delayed by a year. We were hoping to have all of our funding in place by the end of last year and be able to start construction this spring. But because of COVID and you know, delays that we've all experienced, that's we're basically looking at pushing that schedule a year and starting construction, hope to start construction a year from now in the spring of 2022. So this, we're hoping to have or be able to secure all of our funding, have commitments for all the remaining funding by this fall. And then we will hire a firm to assist us with the detailed design drawings and construction documents and contracts to, so that we can bid out the project as we've agreed with the borough to comply with all the public bidding requirements that the borough is subject to. So we'll do that. The plan is to do that this fall, or to retain a firm to assist us with that. And based on all of the work that BL Companies has done to get us to this point, we're hopeful that we'll be able to put those detailed design documents and contracts together quickly and that we'll be able to actually bid out the project over the winter and and the same time, you know, get all of our permitting in place and start construction next spring. And we anticipate that the construction, you know, will be relatively short, you know, two to three months kind of timeframe. So that's where we are. We just wanted to give you an update. And again, thank you for all of your support, ongoing support of the project. We're very excited to keep moving this forward. We think it's going to be a tremendous asset for the community. And what an amazing community we live in. So we all have witnessed this evening.
Thank you, John, for that update. We appreciate it. We look forward to the completion and come back and see us.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind, if I can ask a question, please. John?
Absolutely.
I forget the agreement specifically what it says, but do you need to come back to council to have council approve the final design?
Yes, Keith, I think we've committed to that, you know, whether the, I don't have the agreement in front of me either. But I think we had, the agreement does contemplate that the final design, the final plans will, there will be an opportunity for the boroughs of a public works team to review those plans and provide feedback. We already received some feedback from Susan and Andrea to make sure that we could move that, you know, to the extent we have piles of dirt that we can use to maintain the track, that we move those, you know, more toward the interior and create a little access gravel access lane right along the border between our project and the tri-borough construction property. So we will address that in an updated version of the plan. But but yes, Keith, I do anticipate that we'll at least be looking for a review and approval of the borough's management team. And certainly happy to bring those plans before council for approval at the appropriate time.
Good. Yeah, I think I think we'd better take a look at that before you get into having design drawings done, just so council's aware of what your final plan would be.
Sure, absolutely.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Solicitor. Appreciate it. Well, thank you very much. And again, please come back and see us when you have more information or another update.
Mayor Scott.
Yes.
I would just add that John and the team will also be giving a presentation to the Burris Parks and Recreation Board tomorrow evening.
So if you missed tonight's presentation, you can get the same thing tomorrow. Good. Okay. All right. Thanks. Thanks, everybody.
Okay. Thank you.
Moving forward, is there a motion to approve the February 3, 2021 workshop meeting minutes?
So moved.
Moved by Deputy Mayor Schultz. It's their second.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Landis. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carries. Moving on to Mayor's report, I have three action items. The first, I move that council ratify a letter of support to the Pennsylvania Housing Finance Agency application submitted by Safe Harbor for the redevelopment project in South Milton Township, Cumberland County. Approval is retroactive to February 17, 2021. I so move.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. This again is a ratification of letter of support to PHFA for this affordable housing project in South Milton Township. Any further discussion?
Mayor, I would just add that the information that we received from Scott Scholl noted that they are applying for low-income housing tax credits. And the tax credits are necessary in order to provide the bulk of the funding for development of the proposed Harbor Village. If awarded, they're, they plan to build 41, 2, and 3-bedroom units for low-income and workforce housing. Several units will be for persons who are at 20% of the median income. The remainder will be targeted for persons at 60% of the median income.
And again, this council's always supported affordable housing, and we're happy to do so again, to see the expansion in the area. So, all right, no further comments or questions. I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carries. Thank you. Moving on, item B, I move that council ratify a letter of support to the Central Penn Business Journal Nonprofit Innovation Award Application submitted by Destination Carlisle for their Save Our Smalls program. Approval is retroactive to February 25, 2021. I so move.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion on this? So this program very successful.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I just want to say it's been a flurry of activity from Destination Carlisle to get as many benefits to as many hands as we can in a very short period of time. And I really want to thank Stephanie Gilbert and the work she's done to help our, both our business and our first responders in this tough time.
Absolutely. Definitely got noticed. Sean Crampsey, do you have something to say or no?
Nope, just getting ready to vote.
Okay, all right. In that case, then no further discussion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carries. Thank you. And finally, I move that council approve a memorandum of understanding as part of the National League of Cities City Innovation Ecosystem Program between the National League of Cities Institute and Civ Start on behalf of the borough. This is a continuation from the community engagement tool that staff has been working on through the NLC. Approval of this MOU is needed to continue to move this project forward. I so move. It's their second.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carries. And that ends my report. Community planning and smart growth.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I have one action item tonight on a SALDO amendment. So I will make a motion that Borough Council may direct the borough solicitor to schedule a public hearing on May 13, 2021, and proceed with public notification for proposed subdivision and land development ordinance or SALDO amendment.
Mr. Crampsey makes a motion to schedule a public hearing on May 13, 2021 for a proposed SALDO amendment to the ordinance. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and properly seconded. Any further discussion on this matter?
Mr. Mayor, I'll just add, thanks to Mike Skelly and staff. I know this, this update was 17 years in the making. So it's long overdue and staff did a great job on it. So I'm looking forward to the solicitor drafting and advertising and us moving forward. Thanks.
Thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carries.
Thank you very much. And that's my report.
All right, moving on to public safety. I move that council retroactively approve a drive-by car parade for the annual March Madness campaign sponsored by the Partnership for Better Health for Wednesday, February 24, 2021, from 12:20 PM to 12:35 PM. The parade loop started and finished at 274 Wilson Street. Approval is subject to the Partnership for Better Health reimbursing the borough 10% of the fixed costs and 100% of the variable costs for this event and a valid certificate of liability insurance form, naming the borough as an additional insured. I so move.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion on this item? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carries. The shortest parade ever. All right, my last item, a staff update on traffic calming Bedford East Streets.
All right. Good evening, council. Last September, we made a presentation at the workshop meeting regarding potential traffic calming measures that may be implemented on the two one-way streets of East Street and Bedford Street. And I believe we received consensus from council at that time to proceed with the necessary engineering studies and other public outreach to justify any potential changes. So in your meeting packet this evening is a memorandum which summarizes those activities. And I just wanted to very briefly touch on them and get some feedback from council on whether we should continue in this effort or whether we should put it on pause. So you have before you a memo, and I just want to touch on the high points. We did a traffic analysis to to determine the number of vehicles traveling along the corridor and also the average speed of those vehicles. And in your, in your packet is table one, and that gives the results of that. And I just want to point out one, as it moves around, one thing here. The average, the average number of vehicles per day. The average, the average number of vehicles per day traveling along this route was anywhere from 2,000 to 3,000 cars going in one direction on two lanes. And to put that in perspective, when you look at some PennDOT roads, East North Street has about 6,500 cars per day going on a single lane. East High Street, 18,000. North Hanover, around 15,000. So, you know, two lanes really does, isn't needed to convey the amount of traffic that is, that is traveling along that route. Just as an example, we did a traffic study last year along Franklin, North Franklin Street. And, and there was about 6,000 to 7,000 vehicles per, excuse me, 6,000 to 700 vehicles per day traveling one way. So much, much more along this corridor, but certainly not enough to justify the need for two, two lanes. The second thing to point out is that the speeds were a little bit above the posted speed limit of 25, but not overly excessive. Your memorandum also has some other tables and that gives some estimated cost for any proposed changes and also some conceptual plans that show converting each of the two lanes, each issue of the two one-way streets from a two-lane street to a single travel lane street and using the additional space generated from eliminating one lane to provide space for additional parking and also for a dedicated bicycle lane. Stephanie, if you could show one of the conceptual plans. All right, so zooming in on this, I believe this is the inner, this is East Bedford Street heading northbound between Louther and, between Louther and North Street. And the, the blue shows distant property lines and the red shows proposed markings to designate either the existing parallel parking stalls or additional parking stalls that would be created through changing from a parallel parking to a back-end diagonal parking and also a dedicated bike lane. So in this case, we have two travel lanes and we would reduce that to one. The travel lane width would go from somewhere around 11 and a half feet to somewhere between 10 and 10.2 feet. And the number of parking spaces would increase by, by three in this case. And then we would also have a dedicated parking lane, excuse me, dedicated bicycle lane. In, in looking at this, we did not have sufficient road width. This road varies from 35 to 38 and a half feet to 39 feet. So we didn't have sufficient space to put in two diagonal parking lanes, but, but keeping one parallel and one diagonal. But it, it would provide some additional parking. And also in looking at this, we elected to go to the side of the street that had the greater parking need. So looking at this section of roadway, as you can see, there's, there's more townhomes on the right side than the left side. So that's where we put the diagonal parking. And also we placed the dedicated bicycle lane in front of the diagonal parking to provide for a safer biking lane as opposed to adjacent to a parallel where you'd have the potential for someone to open up, open up a, a car door and hit a bicyclist as they, as they pass by. We did some, some preliminary public outreach. We went to a East Side Neighbors meeting and, and presented the same thing that we provided to council at its September meeting. If council is amenable to pursuing this further, then we would suggest a more robust public outreach that would involve contact with, or attempted contact with each of the properties that border the corridor through some door hangers, alerting them to a potential future letter. And then mailing each of the properties a letter with information and a questionnaire and also using Citizen Lab Citizen Engagement Platform that the Borough will be starting up soon to also do public outreach with a questionnaire to garner the amount of interest by the public for any changes. When we did go to the East Side Neighbors, there was about 30 folks or so there. And some people did not want to see any changes and others were supportive. So it would be helpful to go through this type of public outreach to get a better understanding as far as what the public would like to see along this corridor. Questions, comments from council?
Any questions from council?
One, Mr. Mayor, just, Mark, I don't know if there is any utility layout that would preference one side of the street for having that additional parking. Reason I'm going there is, is, you know, eventually we're going to be looking at, at providing charging capabilities, right? For vehicles. And one of the ideas that gets floated around is to tie them to existing utility lines. I don't know where the utility lines are going in Bedford, but that might be one factor we might want to choose in terms of where we put the additional parking. It sounded like you have a good reason to have it on one side, but maybe you look at, at convey, conveyances or easements we might want to do for charging stations as well.
All right, we'll, we'll take that into consideration.
All right, thank you, Joel.
I was able to attend the East Side Neighbors meeting. Actually, did my bike ride with the police that night. So I was all about listening for bike lanes and looking and actually riding on those streets. So first of all, your presentation was great and I really appreciate you folks coming out for public engagement. But I also love to ask the good question when I see something like that connects on another place. And when you looked, when you pointed out the, the traffic volumes and how there's much higher traffic on some of the state roads and there are just two lanes, and that sort of helps us get the idea that it is capable to change this without it really affecting. So there is one other road that maybe in the future we could look at, and that would be Noble. Because I think the same jockeying happens in other places. So just since you've done this great work and you have a good kind of method and it's such a short stretch, just something that I would, I would appreciate if we would ever be able to look at that. I know a friend at Goodwill EMS that also would back up the idea that it could be looked at. So thank you, Mark.
Anything else from Mark?
Were there, it sounds like there were a few residents who had some concerns about, about the change. Was there, was there any reasoning behind that?
The cost.
Okay.
Mostly.
Okay. Yeah, that's fair enough. Okay. Thanks.
So Mark, are you looking for consensus to move forward from council?
That would be helpful.
Okay. If heads are nodding, I think you have your consensus. Got a hands up, got some clapping going on. There you go.
All right, very good. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mark. And finally, but not least, ever, Public Works, Deb Full and Winston.
Never least.
Never least.
And the two items on the agenda tonight are both items that are part of our capital improvement program and their specialized equipment that has reached the end of its useful life and needs to be brought up to date, which is something our Public Works people have been wonderful at making sure that we stay on top of these things. So the first, I would ask for our council to approve the purchase of two automatic water samplers from Hatch Company for $14,650 through the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania's Cooperative Purchasing Co-Stars Program.
We have a motion to approve the purchase of two automatic water samplers. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carries.
And I would also ask council to approve the purchase of dissolved oxygen probes to replace the existing probes at the wastewater treatment plant from Hatch Incorporated of Loveland, Colorado for $58,347.44 through the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania's Cooperative Purchasing Co-Stars Program.
We have a motion to approve the purchase of dissolved oxygen probes. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carries.
And that completes my report.
Thank you very much. We're now down to new business. If there's any person in the audience or member of council that would like to have a new item added this evening to discuss, now is the time. Going once. All right. All right. Thank you, everyone. We are adjourned.